I think we have a representative from Apple who wants to bring greetings to us.
My name is Martin. I'm here with a prayer, so I'll just pray. Almighty God, bless those who hold office in the government of Lunsford. Let they may do their work in the spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. And all the people of our nation give thanks to you for food, drink, and all that sustains life. May they respect those who labor to produce them. We pray for the work that the church in our community. That it be directed where it is wrong and strengthened where it is right. We thank you for the joy of life. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments? Are there any amendments to the agenda? Alright, mayors report. I want to say a special thank you to the people that worked so hard on the snowflake parade that was last weekend that did not get to happen. That's, you know, for all of you that have served on those kinds of things and then to not get to celebrate all your work. So I do want to say a special thank you to all those people that served on that. This weekend is another festival celebration here in Lunsford. It's the same Lucida Festival. For those of you that might not know, this probably has been celebrated in Lunsford for the past fifty, sixty years. Sweden has probably been celebrated for less than five hundred or something. But it's an important little festival in our community and a lot of activities will be happening. And we will be entertaining a lot of guests. We also have our city Christmas party this Friday night at the Sunstrom. Hope you're all planning on attending. Various concerts and things are happening all over the community, in our churches and schools. And so we encourage everyone to participate and attend those events. I have no other announcements. So here, do I have an approval for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve. Second?
Is the motion seconded to approve the consent agenda? Rick?
Yes.
Jody? Cory?
Yes.
Lynn? Eddie?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
The agenda passes. Are there any appointments?
No, there are no appointments.
No appointments this evening? Here is the place. There's not one.
No, there's not.
Planning on voting?
There's no people ready.
All business? No? Okay, no business.
So, most of you know, we do t-shirts for all of our sports. Soccer, volleyball, baseball, basketball, as well as most of our camps. And when we go through getting shirts, the prices vary for every sport because of the numbers. And so the prices continue to go up when we don't have as many and lower when we do have more. So I talked with all of the kind of vendors that we've used in the past about trying to do an entire year quote. So where we go through them all year and then they quote us knowing... Approximately last year, we did about well over six hundred shirts. So rather than, you know, forty shirts for flag football, they quoted us all year and we'd be the same price for those six hundred shirts. By doing that, it allows them to kind of know we're going to go through them. We're going to continue to get their business for an entire year. And then hopefully next year, we go through and do the same thing. We can also get a little nicer shirts, maybe some dry fits or jerseys for certain sports, rather than just the same t-shirts where the kids don't have the exact same t-shirt in four different colors if they participate. So I'm here to ask, to recommend that we go... I sent it out to four vendors, two local, two in Hawaii, and one in McPherson. And we got three quotes back. And so I am here to recommend that we go with the quote contract for Messenger Clothing Company for this upcoming year. We've used them in the past and...
That's right. Alright. Do you want a motion to approve?
Well, you need a motion to approve.
To approve? Okay, do I have your motion to approve Messenger Clothing Company has the t-shirts?
That's to move. Second?
Okay, okay. Do you need discussion?
And so what are you basing that on?
So I do...
I see all these three things here and I just looked at them before, but I don't quite exactly get what your basis would be.
So I counted up how many shirts we did last year, six hundred fifteen. And I sent that out to all of the vendors and said, "I'm looking for a basketball jersey." We gave them the same quote or same fabric. And we used a hundred twenty-five of them last year. Camp shirts and other sport dry fits, we did three hundred and seventy. And then just other golf staff, different things, we did another hundred and twenty. So I had them all base it off of the numbers of last year. And they are all under the industry, either that's an approximate number or it could go up or down.
So the preferred vendor or your vendor of choice just did a price per size or type?
They all did it based on the exact same number. And then I figured it, how much it would be.
They just start turning this here, right?
I have them. I didn't put them in the link. But I did print out if anybody wants to look at it.
So are we approving the purchase of these t-shirts? Or are we approving the... They'll be our preferred... You'd be approving them as a sole source vendor for 2019? Because the quantities are going to change based upon number of registrations we'll have to approve in whenever we order them.
Actually, we won't have any that would be a price point.
Oh, that's...
So for every time we do this, yeah, every time I do...
No, we will recover the quote come once each sport is registrations are in or shirts, but yes.
Currently, the way we do it, every sport, every camp shirt, every... We go through the same process. So we do it like eight or nine times a year and ask them to keep sending us quotes. And so just because you're going to do it all for the year.
I agree. I think this is a way to go. You know ahead of time, I'm sorry, you know ahead of time exactly what each shirt is going to cost you. Yeah, I should have done this long time ago.
We have one local vendor. How close were they?
We had two. One did not give back a quote. And the next closest local vendor was about six hundred fifty dollars off.
About our shirt?
No.
That's the local vendor, yeah. Did we ever say there was something we were putting in place about?
Ten percent. And were you with all that or not?
We're not.
Go ahead.
Any further questions? All who's in favor of Messenger Clothing Company, say aye.
Aye.
Those? Thank you. Nick, I think Chris, is there any questions?
So we're getting toward the end of purchases that would be required for the UV installation. Then you met with them today to go over install the units. They arrived two days before Thanksgiving, so they are here. I think they're planning on beginning installation, maybe later this week or next week. They're trying to coordinate with getting the company in here and timing that out for startup as well. So this comes along with what we're proposing tonight. And that's integrating the alarm system on our current SCADA with the telemetry on the new UV system. So that will enable the alarms that come up to be sent out on a diver system. And that way they'll be notified, especially with the new system in place. We want to make sure that things work in. If we don't get notified, we don't know if there's an issue. So we've only asked for one bid. And that is because Arti Pedrati is the people that we've used to do the state and the telemetry. Do the whole planet grade. It's kind of their system. They know it. And it's going to make it a lot quicker for them to do with their own system rather than having somebody come out and try it on their system. So that's what we're hoping to accomplish. So we're looking for a motion to approve the bid from Arti Pedrati Company to perform the programming work for the UV SCADA system alarms for three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars.
Still moved.
Second.
The motion seconded to approve Arti Pedrati Company? Any further discussion?
I have a question. Chris, is there... It looks like according to the fiscal note, there will be about thirty thousand dollars left of the budget. Is this the last thing that the project requires or are there other components?
That should be the last of the UV installation that's going to be required.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Do you feel like this is a pretty good price? And you can even just go with the one company. It's still a decent price.
It's still a decent price. Telemetry work, programming work is just not cheap. We found that through any time we've had to do anything. We've got surprises in comparison with some water system stuff and that they've included. And they're fairly close to what they are for that system, so.
Okay, any further discussion? Roxy? Oh, sorry. Cory? Rick?
Yes.
Jody? Cory?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Currently, on the water tower, Altel, who does business as Verizon Wireless, has antennas on the water tower for the wireless communication system. They are wanting to replace that and install new communication antennas on the tower. I know when they did some upgrades, it was last year, that they were looking to replace the antennas. What this is, is a revised agreement, recognizing the change in equipment from what currently exists. Additionally, we were able to increase the annual lease fee on the water tower by two thousand dollars. So we will be receiving nineteen thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars annually. And of course, there's a five-year escalator on renewal terms on this, on the original agreement. So the recommendation is to approve the Second Amendment to the water tower attachment communication side agreement with Altel Communications that is doing business as Verizon Wireless.
Alright, do you have your motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Is the water tower available for other antennas or other use? Or does this agreement kind of lock up the old water tower? Actually, Kansas Broadband... Is it Kansas Broadband Internet or Kansas Broadband Incorporated has antennas on there. They fly out...
Casnet.
Casnet. And yes, there is not exclusive use of the... And in fact, one of the things that in the proposed amendment that they had was that they would have a right of first refusal if anybody else wanted to come back on the water tower. We asked them to strike that from the agreement. Partly because under small cell wireless, under the FCC regulation, you can't do an authorized agreements also. They're not exclusive. Does this mean that whatever they're going to put back up there will be blocking out our letters that we painted on there? Not any more so than what currently is. I think the actual antennas are a little bit smaller. Chris, can you...
They're down just a little bit lower, so it might improve it a little bit.
Well, I realize they have to be in a certain position to broadcast their area that they want to do. But I hope we can make it less oppressive if we can.
Any more discussion?
Just for...
All who's in favor of the lease agreement with Altel, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion goes back. The next item is a general discussion, looking for no decisions. I think you all got some information in your packets about a community stage project. This probably started, I'm going to say, six months ago. And it is in response to a lot of different organizations that are looking for a stage performance area that can be used by various organizations. Started out with Hillings Fest. The Hillings Fest stage is currently in use. It's about forty-two years old. And it's not working as well as it used to. So then a group of people came together, it's about ten people, representing festivals, performance groups, Bethany College, public education, and what do they do during the year? And so what would be their needs? We talked with Kelly Dower from Dower Welding. And Kelly brought to us two engineers that he has worked with. And we've now had three meetings with those people. The information that you have in your packets, the word you're bringing up, we have enough to see it. Looking, funding for this would be NUTS foundation money. When we first started out, we were thinking about fifty thousand dollars. And it's probably going to be about a hundred thousand dollars. And it would be self-contained, available to be used by anybody who's in our community. The design is by these two engineers plus Kelly. Kelly would build the whole thing here, which was another positive. We can order some things like this from all sorts of other places. But this would be our own design and build here in Lunsford. In the discussion that Greg and I had about this, the grant will have to be put in by somebody. Festivals, all of the chairpersons of those change over time. And so in this group discussion, everybody suggested that the city be the owning entity for this. And so if that was true and the city did do that, then these are some issues that we would need to discuss. And do you want to look at all these issues?
Well, I mean, I... I think it'd be beneficial.
Okay. Storage. If you're looking on your design thing, the Hillings Fest committee has a storage area. That probably would not be adequate for this. Kelly Dower does have some buildings that this could be stored in. It needs to be stored inside, not left on the outside. So that is a possibility there. Insurance coverage. Mike Driver has been on this group of people discussing this. And he said putting it on city coverage would not be a problem liability-wise. We would have to work through that. What groups would be allowed to use it? This group that has been meeting has not really struggled with some like that, that what groups would be allowed to use it. We're mainly thinking it would be just used within the community. Mike Driver does the landmark concert series. And he tries to have concerts all over the community. And this could go. I mean, it can be on dirt, it can be on cement, it can be all sorts of places. But it would have the capability of hanging sound, microphones, as well as lighting on it. So groups, if you're in Lunsford and you are using it for an approved thing and who exactly approves all of this, that this group has not struggled with that yet. City as an additional issue. Maintenance expenses, set up and tear down. I think a lot of the set up and tear down, city staff commitment to set up and tear down, city staff levels. One of the things that we talked about was very often, a great idea will come to this community and then all of a sudden, the city has to do it all. And that is not the intent here. But we know that this can enhance a lot of events as well as create new events for Lunsford. So if we want to bring in some group and sell tickets to do here whatever the group would be, it is a professional-looking stage. And it's not... And also, very often, we are struggled, we struggle with using the van shell. And in the summer, we all know how hot the van shell is. And it's in the blazing sun until eight-thirty at night. And so this could be put into a shaded area and you wouldn't have those problems. The challenge here is the NUTS foundation grants have to be put in by January the eleventh. I did speak with Becky Goss, head of the NUTS Foundation. And this will be going in, in the larger grants, which this year, two hundred and thirty-five thousand. One of the things that she said that they had been struggling with, the McPherson Community Foundation, is grants that really impact the whole community. It's not just a specific request for one piece of something from some group. This is, this would be available to the whole community to use it. And I think that there would be new ideas brought forward if we do have a good place to perform. If any of you have ever tried to perform or put together a event, you know that the stage is a huge, huge issue. And this town is a really big issue. And you don't want to get out the Hillings Fest stage because that takes a huge amount of people. And it's very limited to where it really can be used. This one can be used lots of different places. So just any questions? And we talked about it in Panoff. It was a request that came through at Panoff, thinking about what are some big issues, big projects that Lunsford might have that could be used with NUTS foundation monies. And being this is the Hillings Fest here, if this is funded by, if the city council agrees to put the grant in, if it is funded, Kelly will guarantee that it will be ready by Hillings Fest. But he has to start building it in like the end of March.
It couldn't be ready by like July.
That was brought up and he said, "I can't promise that one." So, yeah, yeah, yeah.
These are all good questions. And I guess is the plan to have like a test group or someone develop a plan with answers to all these questions?
Yeah, and how...
Or recommendations?
Right, yeah. And so, right now, if you were going to put up the Hillings Fest stage, you're going to probably be needing eight, nine people to do that. This one, Kelly says, two to three people easily. And it can be pulled behind a pickup truck. So the ease of this, it's made out of aluminum and steel.
My other question would be, are there any certifications or engineers sign off as far as wind loads and other things? Well, one of the things that we discussed in the staff meeting today is we would want, at least from a staff perspective, we would want stamped engineering drawings, kind of goes to the liability standpoint. And also some inspections during the manufacturing process to ensure that it was meeting those drawing specifications. Because if we don't have those stamped drawings, all the liabilities are on us. If we have stamped drawings and it's a design failure that causes the issue, then it's the engineer's responsibility and not the city's. This is at large in the state, you'd have seen some failures of cities due to wind or weather.
The, these two engineers are professional engineering people. They're basically graduates and... And Kelly has worked with them on lots of projects. And that's how we got to know them, because of Kelly. So anyway, so there is, I mean, there's a ways to go on this. But trying to get this through by January the eleventh. So anyway, any questions or, yeah?
Well, number one, I think it's a great idea. I've helped with the other stage a few times when my kids were dancers. And I never looked into that yet. It's very cumbersome. And I have to have one lead person to... One question I have about some of these drawings is that, and maybe it's just the drawings themselves, but will this be ADA?
Yes.
Like a couple of these, like kind of sort of see, it looks like there's a ramp, that thing, but that's what makes it...
What are you talking about? There's a lot, if we're, we kind of forced this, these drawing thing, we've got to be... We're under the gun as far as January the eleventh. We've got to have this in. And so we will get final drawings and design. If that's not what these are.
Oh, no. Yeah, I tell that.
We think of charging people groups to use this? Or, I mean, I think you would have to have some skin again where everybody's going to want to use it. Because it has to be hired or it needs painted and there's going to be maintenance.
That's right.
So maintenance, storage, insurance, all of that.
Chief Chris, and Red Tan, the Seska Centennial Representative, will say.
That was going to be a question I kind of had in the back of my mind. Is how purchasing one would compare to hiring a stage direction company coming up there?
Without, without the things in front of me, but the back line, which includes sound, lighting, some specific instruments, microphones, stuff like that, four hour bit in July will be around seven thousand... I'm sorry, between seven and eight thousand dollars, I believe.
That's not including the...
And that's for about, you know, two-hour use. That's what, Cory?
That's excluding the PNA or that's including?
That is sound, light, that's the back line. That's...
I wonder what the stage is trying to struggle with.
It's not, it's not as large as a couple of these. I know that. I think the minimum requirement they had was, seems like it was twelve by fourteen or something like that. And it's larger than that. This was the bands.
I'm assuming the life of this stage would be long, like about ten years or more.
It'd only take to get repaired.
And that is a positive for us. I was talking with Gary Chupin about this and he said, you know, this is something that, we were talking economic development and Kelly is growing his business. And so for something like this, that we are wanting to be able to have a homegrown business, be able to build something like this, I think this is what I'm...
Who would be the group to... I'm curious, I'm curious, I guess, to come up with a recommendation for all these questions.
Well, at this, at this time, I would say that the people who have been serving... Well, at this time, I would say that the people who have been serving on this, they've had three meetings so far, they're all aware of all of these issues and we've talked with some of them already. So, and if there's other people that we'd like to have into the group?
Well, two big questions I have. You say Lunsford groups. I've been in so many discussions where we top Lunsford and it grows to Smoky Valley and it grows bigger. I think those groups need to be defined and not only the groups, but what types of groups. And you also need to consider, and if it's going to be owned by the city and a group is willing to, while you may find, and I'm just speaking without consulting legal on this in any way, shape, or form, but if it's not defined ahead of time and a group approaches the city and we may find what they do objectional, but it's legal and they meet the requirements of the policy and we say no, then we could potentially run afoul of the law. So I think defining the groups makes a difference. I think, and I know I've said this a thousand times and I'll keep saying it, we have thirty-one employees and the average city our size has forty. The level of staff commitment that we have to put towards this is important because if it gets to a point where all of a sudden the streets, all they're doing is setting up and tearing down a stage, then the streets aren't going to get that. So, I mean, the expectations and the level of involvement really needs to be specified. But if it's also under our umbrella, we have to be able to at least oversee the process of set up and tear down.
Is there anything in the grant as far as stipulations if we were successful and we get to receiving the grant? I guess there's no guarantee, but hopefully they'll get a chance at it. Is there any stipulation as far as renting something that you purchase through the group or rent to these organizations? I assume they'd be allowed to do that, in other words?
From what I've seen of the grant, that wouldn't be a problem, especially if you wanted to put it to sustainability. I mean, I mean, that shouldn't, nothing I read in the grant, in the grant application would suggest that you couldn't rent it if you owned it.
Well, I guess it'd be part of the plan if we rent it for enough to either subsidize the city and pay for someone to come in and direct it or be a little side business, I guess.
I think there are a lot of those kinds of details that really need to be talked through big time. I mean, you know, all of it. Right now, it is, bringing it to you is because there will be a formal time, when is that breaking January? The first January meeting?
That's the seventh.
Yeah, and the first meeting in January. That's the seventh.
Yes, the city council meeting is January the seventh.
Right, that's when we said we were going to do this?
Well, actually, I mean, if you're going to write a grant application...
If we said...
Yeah, if the grant is due on the eleventh.
Anyway...
So essentially two is from tonight.
So there is work to do to see if this is going to happen.
Having the ground rules and the plan solve the success.
Are you suggesting then that the grant would have to be done by the seventeenth?
No, no, okay, I'm sorry. No, I'm not suggesting that, but since this is discussion only. I mean, let me be honest with you, I hate for you to say tonight, "Yeah, let's go ahead and do it," when we don't know any of these details.
Okay, I just...
But the idea of having some of the details and then coming back to an agenda on the seventeenth, that way if those details are worked out, it will also allow the opportunity for a decision by city council at that time. But I'd also come out, what other concerns, suggestions, opportunities, et cetera, which you want considered? Because this list right here was put together in about five minutes.
The type of insurance that we have on our vehicles and things like the bleachers is some kind of a marine insurance, is that right?
It's a little marine.
Vehicles are automobile insurance, the more, the off-road type things are on the marine. So we do have trailers on the vehicle insurance.
Oh, so this would be on vehicle insurance then?
It's possible that it could be.
Okay. Because then would the event still have, the event would still have to have proof of insurance, I presume, for liability?
And we charge a damage deposit.
Who would authorize approval of the use of these stations? Would that be the U R A or council or committee?
That could be a committee. You have to get people to volunteer to...
I think you need to define a commission, a use of usages first, because you're going to want some level of consistency so that if my group gets approved and there's not any guidelines in place, and then your group comes in and it's not approved, why does I approve and you not?
That would be a critical question. It could be a lot. Would it be by one C D degrees or six degrees or whatever, or with any nonprofits or anyone or any organization or individual?
What other piece, excuse me, Corey, I'm sorry. What other piece of equipment does the city own that a committee would decide whether or not someone else could use it or lease it?
Barricades.
What, barricades?
Barricades.
And they're what, fifty bucks a piece, a hundred bucks a piece? I mean, we're talking about a hundred thousand dollar stage that we're going to, that a committee's going to decide who uses it? I think this sounds like something that needs to go before council.
I don't know, I was thinking the city would, the committee wouldn't decide who uses it, right? There's a list, it's not about the subjective decision of who the city uses. It's the committee's like, well, it needs new tires or, you know, somebody that can oversee the thing other than the city. I don't think they should decide that it is to use it, that's...
I'm not sure something like this would be from the council. I mean, we have the sensor conference center that gets rented and we don't approve every one of those rentals. We have staff that we rely on to make those decisions. I don't see this as being chaotic, especially once we get kind of rules and regulations of how is going to be rented or who or what event type events and stuff like that. Why would it have, I just will see it having to come to council for us to say, yes, if we have staff and it meets the criteria, staff can say, yes, we'll have it.
So what about a request then, Rick, for a beer garden? Those do come before council after an application's been completed? So what's the difference there?
Well, those are special event type things as well, but this is, to me, this is a piece of equipment.
For special events? I mean, the geosensor doesn't go anywhere. It's not going to be on the road putting anyone's life at risk. It stays in one place and there are dedicated staff, so I don't think it's a big deal.
Actually, that's just my opinion, that I don't think so.
As well as mine.
I don't think council.
If your question wasn't rhetorical, one of the differences we're talking alcohol regulations, and that's the reason kind of for council is to comply with statute.
Okay.
And I wasn't suggesting we should approve.
No, okay, yeah, I got that.
Well, that's a ways down the road, we don't even have it yet.
Any other discussion I want to hear? Will this be actively worked on, so if you do have any concerns, any suggestions, please pass them along to me and I will make sure that this group of people...
I'm getting a little ahead still, the set up and tear down, is it being described as a design such that a group could do it or is it going to require...
It was, it was, I could do it. Yeah, that's a scary thought. But it's, it has hydraulics. It has hydraulics and it's always, it's whatever. Yes. And if you've ever worked on a Hillings S. stage, I mean, this one, two or three people can do it. This tell us it's really...
And the Hillings S. stage isn't without safety, is it?
It's not safe in this.
It's a little dangerous.
And another funny thing about this is Kelly's dad, Norm Dower, he's the one that designed this. And it's a forty-two, five, whatever. And so we said, "Well, could you guarantee that you're owning a steel stage?" He said, "Sure." So, yeah. Okay, any other questions about that? Please let me know, appreciate that. Holiday bonus.
Historically, city council has given a bonus to city employees in the holiday season. It has been a hundred dollars per employee. Currently, there are thirty-one regular full-time employees with the city.
I'd like to make the motion to approve a holiday bonus in the amount of one hundred dollars per employee for a total of three thousand one hundred dollars and let's all keep this a secret.
I second that.
It's been moved, seconded, it's a secret. To approve a hundred dollars per employee. Any more discussion? Rick?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
All right, city administrator contract. Rick?
Yeah, we'll start off just by, I'll just make a motion to approve the employment agreement between the city of Lunsford and city administrator, Greg.
Second.
Okay, leave for the discussion, go on.
The motion, they actually recite the salary of this involvement. Oh, okay. And the motion is based upon a positive evaluation and we have the attached employment agreement between the city of Lunsford and city administrator that would be effective in order one, two thousand nineteen through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. The agreement provides an additional fifty dollars in per compensation and sets the annual salary at one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, one hundred and fifteen thousand and fifty dollars. Adlines other terms for the employment.
Second.
I think that's an additional fifty dollars per month and for compensation, not fifty dollars total is fifty per month.
It doesn't say, yeah, it doesn't say that in there, it's just a...
Correct.
But yes, that is correct, yeah.
Still second.
Okay, the evaluations were distributed to department heads and city council and mayor. All of those were returned to me and I tabulated all of it and we did meet in executive session earlier to discuss all of that. And again, it was a positive evaluation and I think it is warranted that we proceed with Greg D. Morris, the city administrator, with the stipulations I said earlier.
Any other questions? This needs a vocal vote, Bill?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, I don't think there's any further discussion, right?
No.
Okay, are there any other others?
I have one other other, and that is, Mr. Lindholm, could you stand up where you are, please? I want you to know that I'll go home tonight without a headache because this rotten light above us...
That's what you do with it.
Thank you very much.
I do have another other, and that is a special thank you to you and your staff for what they did in the snow removal. I have heard it so many times throughout people saying, "Wow, you really had a bright look on it." So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other others?
I have four things. I have something in front of you, it was information about a training opportunity on December twelfth. You can hire, well, sponsored by a league of municipalities, the legislative experience creating change to your advocacy. Your ticket, registration deadline is Friday. You'd like to attend, please let Roxie or myself know. Cassie's on vacation this week. Also, there's information in front of you regarding the Christmas party on Friday. We will open the doors at six fifteen. We'd like you, each of you, to be there before that. Go ahead and enter on the south side of the building. Please wear your name tags and greet our guests as they arrive. I said four, I can only remember three, where they went to four for me, I forgot already. After the meeting, Roxie needs to visit with each of you in the Cassie's office, so if you would see her, I appreciate it.
Okay. No other others? What are your questions for children?